Call to order in the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Two Harbors. Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Here.
Glasher?
Here.
Redwall?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
Pacey?
Here.
Erickson? Redden?
Here. Fledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to request the addition of consent agenda item number sixteen, approving the request of the Public Works Director to allow Jesse Henon to attend Class A Truck and Trailer School in Plymouth for our CDL road test, and the addition of a referring, consent agenda item number seventeen, referring to public affairs, a proposed ordinance regarding the City Code Committee and Commission appointments.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda? Still won't.
Second. Maybe he won't come back over.
Roll call on that, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Redwall?
Yes.
Swanson? Pacey?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right. Now, we have several appearances this evening. I'll give each person three minutes to speak, at which time, I'm just gonna hit the gavel. Seems the fairest way to let everybody know that their time is up.
Sure.
We will start our appearances with John Ramos.
Good evening, Council. I am John Ramos, investigative reporter with the Duluth Monitor.
He's so wonderful, God.
The first time I showed up here was four weeks ago. I'd just begun looking into the situation in Two Harbors, and I've been pretty busy in that last four weeks, and I just wanted to come here and thank the Council and the Mayor for making my life incredibly interesting. I haven't had a single boring day in four weeks. Every time that phone rings, new adventure. I haven't seen anything like this ever in 25 years of reporting. So, as far as the investigation goes, this is serious. But I think that there may be people in this room facing jail before this is all over, and that's not an exaggeration, and...
Well, they just left the room.
You may, I, I, that's people, plural. You may be feeling a little worried, a little nervous, a little afraid, and I would tell you, that's a healthy, those are healthy reactions to have. This wall of obstruction and nontransparency and silence, which has served you so well for a long time, it's coming down. And if anybody wants to talk to me about anything, I encourage you to do it. The time is not, there is not much time, the window is closing, and, yeah, that's what I have to say, and I'll leave some cards up here. And this isn't a picnic.
All right. Next, I have Tom Koehler under appearances.
That's true, Mayor could be here.
I am Thomas V. Koehler, K-O-E-H-L-E-R. I've been a resident, registered voter in Ward Two for 50 years, since I got out of the submarine service. The theme of this presentation is about trust, decisions, consequences of the decisions. I came to this town to visit my ma, had no job, no direction, no plans, and found out there were city council meetings that were open to the public, and I thought this was an interesting novelty coming from Minneapolis, where nobody ever has any contact with the city council, just a monstrously due city. My high school was a trade school, I was trained as an electrician. I got out, I was a reactor operator on the Navy in two different subs. The submarine is a dangerous machine, it's a complicated machine, it operates on science, and trust, and sound decisions. The failure of any of those results in a prompt death. I live by trust and sound decisions. City Council at that time saw a strange face walk in upstairs in the old fire hall, and you could hear the heads turn, who is this person? They'd had a brief halt in their proceedings. One of the councilors came over and asked me, who are you and why are you here? I gave him the short bio, he said, where are you working? I says, well, I don't have a job right now. He said, come on down to the Foundry tomorrow morning, I've got a job for you. We learned to trust our city councilors. I trusted him, I trusted the Mayor then, and that's the way this city had run for a century and more, even though we were a ward of the railroad, we still had trust in the people who ran the city. We trusted that their decisions would redound to the benefit of the city. Recent events have shown that our coward who has shown his true colors by not facing his adversaries, he's run out on us, his decisions have been shown to be flawed.
Thanks, Tom.
That's three minutes?
That was three minutes, yep.
Okay. You sow the wind, you reap a real wind. We have the right of recall as a charter city. He has two choices: resign and save his good name, or face the city and the consequences of his decisions.
Thanks, Tom. Next, we have Caitlin Cobbs.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Cobbs. Most people around here know me as Kate or Katie. I've only been in town about five years, so in Two Harbors terms, I joke it's about a day, and I recognize that, but I also live here, I work here, I work hard to be a part of the community, and I'm concerned at what I'm seeing. I come from a small town, I lived in Malacca, Minnesota, that's where I grew up, I know how small towns work, I know things run a little differently, run a little slower, and I'm, I understand that and I'm comfortable in that. What I have seen and what I have heard really worries me, and I want to start off, because I came to the Council in August, I believe, of 2021, because I was concerned. I was concerned with the Mayor bringing partisan politics into our town at a time that was stressful for most, and naming the town in those politics. I want to be clear, I have no concern whether anybody here is any sort of political party. When you bring the town into it, as a Mayor, as a city council member or anything, I think we have cause for concern. I spoke at that time how it affected me personally to hear that, and, and made me consider whether I wanted to be a part of this community, because I know that in a small town, things aren't always as open, and to live here, I need them to be a little bit more open. I haven't lived here forever, but I have ties to the area that go back 80 years. My great-great-grandfather, granduncle, worked on the Oba Orboats, used to bring his family up here to vacation 80 years ago and show off what he did for a living. So, I have heard from this community, I have seen it, and I want us to be remembered for being a good community, working together, as Tom has said, to trust each other, and to have full transparency and honesty in how we're running things, and at this point, I don't know if, if we can do that with the current Mayor, unfortunately. I wish he had stayed, I wish him no ill will personally. This is purely as, as the discussion goes, as how our city is going to be run and what it's gonna look like for everyone, and I don't know if the answer includes the Mayor at this point, Mayor Chris Swanson. And I know I have been hearing from people in the community, I have been hearing from people outside of the community. My 90-year-old grandparents who live in Duluth have called me up and want to know what's going on in Two Harbors. My mom, who still lives in Malacca, is asking the same thing. My friends who live in the Twin Cities want to know. I don't want to live in a city that's the laughing stock of the state, because we are right now. I want to live in a city that's known for its beautiful lake, for the community we can build here, and I can see that. I volunteer with community partners, I take part in the E and the G, and I've seen the great things that come. Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. All right, and then next we have Sharon Erickson.
First, Sharon Erickson, Ropes, last name is Ropes, R-O-P-E-S, like getting to know the ropes. I wish the Mayor was here, because I want to speak to him directly, as well as the Council, but, Mayor, Mr. Chair, Council members, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here to speak to you tonight. My name is Sharon Erickson Ropes, and I'm here as a hometown girl. I was born and raised here, and my parents are Paul and Irene Erickson. I'm in the class of 1972, graduated from Two Harbors High School, and I moved back to town about a year ago to retire here and as a business owner. I love Two Harbors, and I'm sure you do too. For the past year, I've been hearing a low buzz from friends and neighbors about their growing concerns with the Mayor. They've been troubled and quietly alarmed, but recently, Two Harbors has been in the headlines across the state, not in a good way. People are deeply embarrassed about that. Two Harbors has become a laughingstock because of you, Mayor. We are getting phone calls, texts, and Facebook posts from family and friends across Minnesota and even other states, asking what is going on with your Mayor. The Attorney General of Minnesota is investigating the Mayor. People are horrified by that. We want, we don't want to be in the headlines for corruption. It's just too much. Mayor, I know you love Two Harbors, but right now, you're hurting our hometown. You've lost the faith of the people. With respect, I'm asking you, Mayor, to show true leadership and personal dignity. Step down. Do the right thing. Let Mr. Redden do his job as interim Mayor, and let the city council begin putting Two Harbors back on the right path. The current chaos will continue to tear us apart, and I know you don't want that, Mayor. The only way forward with the least injury to everyone is for you to resign now. Please put Two Harbors' interests above your own ambitions. It's the right thing to do for Two Harbors' reputation and for the hometown people that I know you care about, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
For the record, that was timed pretty good, you were at two minutes and 59 seconds. Up next for appearances, we have Patty Mardine, our city clerk, with a review of the redistricting plan.
Mr. President?
Sure.
So, first I want to talk about the redistricting. That's a requirement of the city. The city's required to redistrict by March 29th of this year. So, redistricting is the process of redrawing the boundaries of election districts to ensure that the people of each district are equally represented. It's typically done in the United States every 10 years after the completion of the decennial census. At the federal level, the United States Constitution and several laws that have passed since then have outlined the process to make sure each state has representatives and the House of Representatives roughly proportional to its population. Within Minnesota, the state constitution and statutes identify what districts need to be redistricted and the process of redistricting that happens, so that each congressional district, including both chambers of the state legislature, county commissioner districts, and city wards, among others, are drawn to give all persons in the state equal representation. So, when does redistricting take place? It must be completed before the state primary in 2022. So, the details of redistricting involve deadlines and important dates that are defined in statutes or rules. The city's required to complete their portion of the process on or before March 29th. This will allow the county time to make any changes which may be necessary to bring their commissioner districts into compliance with the timeframe that's required of them. If city wards, if cities with wards fail to redistrict within the timeframe designated, the Mayor and city council members will not get paid until redistricting is completed. City wards are portions of a city that are represented by a specified elected officials in the city council, and wards must be drawn, drawn to satisfy statutory requirements for boundaries as well as population. They're bounded by precinct lines, they have to be compact and contiguous in an area, they must be as equal in population as practicable, and the city must use the population counts that are certified by the United States Census Bureau and reflect the population as of April 1st, 2020. So, what we have done is we've acquired the census block population data and used it to prepare recommended boundary changes. Then we solicited public involvement by having a public meeting on March 7th, and tonight we're asking that the Council adopt a resolution establishing new ward boundaries. And then, we'll provide notification to the county and the state, we'll publish and post the new ward maps. During that time period, within three weeks, no later than April 5th, the voters will have a right to contest, and that process is outlined in the, in the statute. And then, once that process has all been completed, we will notify voters by mail. So, shown here is the existing ward map. I've also got a copy of it up here with the red and white on this poster. What that represents is the numbers in our population right now with the existing ward map. In Ward One, we have 851 people, Ward Two, 855, Ward Three, 964, and Ward Four, 993. So, the current spread is 172 between the high and the low. With the city's current population at 3,633, those populations should be around 908.25 in each ward, for them to be exactly equal. So, what we're proposing is that we move our district lines to make them more equal. And how we did that is we started with Ward One, and if you can see the, the areas that are highlighted in pink, those are the wards that are the, the blocks that we're proposing to add into Ward One, taking them from Ward Two. And then, if you see in Ward Two, I've got written that in orange, the dotted lines represent the existing ward, and the orange represents the blocks that will be added. So, right here, and then back up and along these wards, these lines here are, are the blocks that we're proposing to add. And what I want to mention is if you see these blocks here, like are along the railroad lines, like Seventh Avenue and that first block, and then up on Eighth Avenue, this other block that I've got my mouse over, those parcels, those blocks, there's a low amount of people in those blocks, and so when you're looking at census data, the census doesn't break that information down necessarily by each actual physical block. If there's not a lot of people living in an area, they don't want to provide that detail of information, like per household, to the public. The census can't, can't release that information per household, exactly where it's located on the map. So, census broke down this area all along the railroad tracks and up, up to Odegaard Park here as one block. So, that's why you see this one orange block kind of sitting out alone, and then these other ones kind of sitting out alone. That's because the census block data wasn't available for those particular blocks in that detail, and so we couldn't include that. So, if you go up to Ward Three now, those are the areas that I'm, the yellow blocks that I've highlighted, I'm proposing to add to Ward Three, and those are coming from Ward Four. So, anybody have any questions on any of that? Okay, so, the end result would be Ward One, looking like I've got it showing up here, outlined in black. We'd be increasing Ward One by 89, and we'd be decreasing Ward Two by 89. This shows Ward Two, how we're proposing. We'd be increasing Ward Two by 142, and that's, that was along the top there, and then some from Ward Four here along the side, and decreasing Ward Three by 120, and decreasing Ward Four by 22. And then again, decreasing Ward Two by that 89 that we already talked about that we were increasing in Ward One. And Ward Three, we would be increasing by 67 from Ward Four, and also by, we'd be reducing by 120 that we're sending to Ward Two. And in Ward Four, we are decreasing Ward Four by 89, which is going to increase Ward Three by 67, and Ward Two by 22. So, this is the end result. We're going to end up with 910 people in Ward One, 908 in Ward Two, 911 in Ward Three, and 904 in Ward Four. The spread on that is about six or so, which is much, much better than the 172 people that we had spread out in the last, with the existing map. So, there is the current map, or the map that I'm, I'm proposing to have the wards changed to. Does anybody have any questions on that? So, that's all the information I have on that. Of course, the resolution is later on in the agenda under New Business.
Real quick, it looks like Council Reddick had a question.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Patty, and I know Carrie worked really, really hard on this, and I was at the presentation again a few nights ago, and I, I thanked all of the staff at that point, but that could not have been a pleasant job to undertake, and so I thank you guys so much for doing that, and I'm glad it's only once every 10 years, but outstanding job, and thank you for getting us recalibrated, and we're good to go for another 10 years, and hopefully you won't have to do that again, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
All right. Move on to our agenda to administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we had our community development planner, Jennifer Sturbin, testify at the Capitol for the conveyance of the DNR land bordering Lake Superior. She did a really great job, and I just want to thank her for going up there and doing that, and then even making it back today for our council meeting. We are gonna, you know, we'll see what happens with, as that bill progresses. Also, we did receive a call from Representative Sandsby, who is working on a draft bill to provide a tax credit to municipal utility customers who were affected by the polar vortex in February of 2021. She is working on that bill and was asking for some numbers from the city. That bill is 3944, so I encourage people to reach out and support that and get some information, and definitely call City Hall if you have any questions. I, I also wanted to thank Senator Tina Smith, Congressman Pete Stover, and Senator Amy Kolbisher for their hard work and diligence in getting us 3.5 million for the wastewater treatment plant project. These dollars will be coming from the EPA, and the city is so excited to have additional funding for this project, and are so appreciative for all the hard work that went into getting that for our wastewater treatment plant project. And that is all I have tonight, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports. Get the library board first. Planning Commission?
I guess that's me. The Planning Commission, at the beginning of the month, we, I have to think back now. We reviewed some more of the language issues with the, within the short-term rentals. Jen, help me out.
We talked about capping intensity.
Oh, yeah, the capping, that's right, I knew there was something big. Anyway, the Planning Commission meets again tomorrow evening to have further discussion with regards to the short-term rentals, and I think that will probably take up the bulk of our meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. Trees and Trails Commission?
I was not present.
Jackie Reddick.
I, I have some notes, and, and I was looking at mine, I was looking at how extensive that Ms. Durbin's notes are, and I'm gonna use hers instead of mine. We did meet, and I had to meet by Zoom, and Mr. Running, who was here with us today, from the Friends of the City of Two Harbors, Trees and Trails, he was requesting the approval for the annual tree planting project at Lighthouse Point. They do this every year, usually 25 trees, and 180 white pines have been planted to date, some are already eight feet tall. They desire to plant 25 white spruce, 10 mountain ash, and five or six of those are going to be located in Lakeview Park, which is where we lost a lot of trees during the storm over the summer, and so they will reuse cages, and this is 100% voluntary and at no cost to the city, so I thank you guys for that, thank you very much. Arbor Day Project 2022, the Tree City is requiring a project to be done in conjunction with the annual proclamation for Arbor Day this year, and that is on April 29th. So, Mr. Hukriti suggested that a joint project with the school district happen, and that would enable the kids to be able to help work on dealing with, taking care of the trees, learning, you know, tree care and maintenance. Tree City USA Growth Award, we did get informed by Ms. Durbin that the city received the award for 2021. This is a prestigious honor, and it recognizes environmental improvement and higher levels of tree care in the city, and that award is a direct reflection of the hard work by the commission, the community, and the staff and local partners, so thank you to all of those folks. And other than that, we're looking for things going on as far as the Highway 61 corridor, how we're going to make that happen, and trails that are going to be able to help facilitate motorized vehicles going either under, around, or some way getting out of the city without having to have, to deal with Highway 61. So, that was our report. Thank you. Does that sum it up? Thank you, Jen?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I should be out some more often.
Utilities Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Utilities Committee met on the 9th and reviewed the industrial user agreement with Castle Danger Brewery. This was gonna be revised... This was gonna be revised further, and we're gonna discuss it at the next utility meeting. We reviewed the changes to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four CIP project. This is a project where we're looking to, again, partner with the county, but we had, we did some adjusting to the streets that were in the original plan, just because it made a little bit more sense, and we felt it was within the best interest. So we kind of referred that back to Joe and the gang down there. We had to review a cable location contract for the railroad property, and I think that is, I don't think it's anything we need to worry about. We're gonna just go ahead and fill out that form, and I think there's like one, so we're good at that. We approved Luke going to Washington, DC with the Rural Water Association, which we really think is great, because he is the only person from that board that's going besides the director, and, you know, just having Luke there and the ability to thank our legislators and congressmen and women for the wonderful grant that we just got. We told them that he best look them all up and shake their hands. Just an FYI from the Electrical Department. Blake is a little concerned because of supply chain issues that are causing some serious backlog for replacements of transformers and such. So he did kind of advise us that as we are looking, moving forward on any kind of developments or projects, that we need to make sure that he is well-informed. Some of the things that he needs to order are three years out. And so that could put a little snafu in anything that we tried to do as far as development, housing. So I think that pretty much sums it up. The rest of it's probably on the agenda. Mr. Chair, if I may, could I report on the HRA Board as well?
Sure.
I got left off.
Okay.
But that's okay. HRA met on the eighth of March. We welcomed our new member, Philip Arnold. We have a new president of the board. Robert Norland has stepped into that position, so we had a new agenda format, which I was extremely excited about. We actually had two residents for the first time attend the open meeting of the HRA Board, and I think that was great. They should have a voice, and they should be able to listen to what's going on, and so we appreciated their attendance. And unfortunately, due to the information that Mr. Costley shared with us at the last city council meeting, Cassandra Beardsley has resigned. We're reviewed the code of conduct that, I refer to them from the city's code of conduct, and that was adapted for the HRA, and we're gonna review that and probably put that in place for the HRA Board. We did have long discussion of board responsibilities and bylaws and lease agreements, and we're gonna be looking at all of our policies and procedures just to review and approve. The goal is to form a resident advisory committee to review the annual capital improvement plan and the five-year plan, and it's also a way to better communicate with the residents of the Bayview Terrace on what's happening within, within the building and why. We're looking at making up a new member packet for new members as they come on that board. Tom is continuing to work for, look for security cameras. The problem is that we don't need a full lot. We need like four, and it's twelve thousand dollars to install, but then it's a four hundred dollar a month thing to maintain them, so we suggested that maybe we look at other vendors. The executive director has spoken with Attorney Costley, and it sounds like we'll have some interaction between the HRA Board and our legal needs. That's on the agenda. There is a special meeting scheduled for tomorrow, I believe, for the HRA Board to discuss executive director wages, and that is my report. Oh, and I will get that special meeting, I apologize, because I have to be here for two minutes.
Thank you. Public Works Committee?
Indeed, thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet on March tenth, and Mr. Rain was there, and he did talk to us about the budget to finish out the Eighth Street project, talked about the three rounds of the punch list to get things finished, the initial, the intermediate, and the final, and all construction for the coming construction season around the rest of that project should be completed by July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. He gave a feasibility report that should be coming to the council here, the sidewalk feasibility report. That's in our packet and is a draft, and there should be a public hearing on that on the twenty-eighth. Mr. Gilbert talked about revisit putting fences near sidewalks. They need a little bit more room when you're trying to plow, so the snow has a place to go if the fences are too close to the sidewalk. And also, snow removal and billing. He wants to look into a more easier and streamlined process and cost, and also look at a different plan or process for the whole parking season during the winter months. One of his drivers of a Grader said he had to count ninety-one cars that he had to go around. So he's thinking, I asked him what would be the best option, you know, as far as what he could come up with, and he said perhaps, you know, a warning, a ticket, and a tow, so that folks can get their vehicles off the road so that they can plow them. So that is what we discussed at Public Works. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Were there any other committees like that? No? All right. Sounds good. Up next, it's the council president's assignment of the Liquor Store Ad-Hoc Committee members. I am assigning myself and Councilor Renwald to that ad hoc committee. And after that is the council president's assignment of Strategic Plan RFP Review Ad-Hoc Committee members. On that committee, I am assigning Councilor Glaser and Councilor Woodruff. And then the Ethics Committee is going to meet later this week to discuss information received in recent weeks, and then we will bring that back to the council for evaluation. And, yes.
Who's on that Ethics Committee?
The Ethics Committee is myself and Miles, or Councilor Woodruff, excuse me.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I have a resolution approving the consent to attend items. So. Patty, could you please read those items ahead?
Number one, approving minutes from the February fourteenth and twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two regular city council meeting. Two, allowing claims against the city to be paid on March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Three, approving payroll for the second half of February two thousand twenty-two. Four, a memo from Joe Rain and Brian Golden, Bolt and Ming, providing engineering project updates. Five, accepting with regret a letter from Cassandra Beardsley, providing her resignation from the HRA, and authorizing a letter of appreciation for her service. Six, a letter from Captain Gerald Swanson, US Coast Guard retired, expressing pride in city leadership for recent improvements made to the city, and noting his excitement for the two thousand twenty-two Festival of Sales coming to our city. Seven, a communication from Joe Rain, Bolt and Ming, providing details of the two thousand twenty-two engineering budget for two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two street improvement project. Eight, authorizing a payment to Lakehead Constructors for Pay Application Number Four for the wastewater treatment plant project in the amount of two hundred seventy thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Nine, authorizing the purchase of a new electrical cabinet from EMI for future power at Van Hoben Park and to use for temporary power at Festival of Sales for an amount of twelve thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars. Ten, approving the recommendation of the Utilities Committee to authorize the water and wastewater treatment plant superintendent to attend a rural water rally in Washington, DC with Minnesota Rural Water Association. Eleven, authorizing expenses for the city clerk to attend the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers Association Annual Conference in St. Cloud. Twelve, authorizing an internal bulletin for the position of full-time patrol officer in the police department. Thirteen, designating certain library materials as discarded equipment and authorizing its disposal. Fourteen, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement with Invisionware to provide print management services, hardware and software for the library. Fifteen, accepting the recommendation of the Trees and Trails Commission to authorize Friends of the Trees and Trails Commission to perform their annual tree planting in the Lighthouse Point area, as well as in Lakeview Park. Sixteen, approving the request of the Public Works Director to allow Jesse Henin to attend Class A Truck and Trailer School in Plymouth for a CDL road test. Seventeen, referring to the Public Affairs Committee, proposed city code amendments regarding committee and commission appointments.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on these items? If not, we'll get a roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Renwald?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Redden?
I see no unfinished business. Move on to new business. New business, item number one, a resolution establishing wards and polling places in the city of Two Harbors.
So.
Any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Reddew?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. New business, item number two, resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Two Harbors and Draw Events to provide indemnification for the contract for use of the USAED break wall for Festival of Sale two thousand twenty-two. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Renwald?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Redden?
New business, item number three, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a letter of agreement between the United States of America and the city of Two Harbors and Draw Events for the use of the USAED break wall for Festival of Sale two thousand twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Got a question on what is that letter to the United States of America? What is that exactly? Does anybody?
There's a letter, but it didn't appear in your packet. It's a copy of a letter.
Just to the United States of America.
It's a letter of agreement.
Okay.
It's just for use of the break wall, and it's because that, that particular break wall is owned by the United States Corps of Engineers. So that's why it's.
That's, I was just, yeah.
Yep.
Go ahead, Councilor Glaser.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess, can I again ask the city attorney if there, what the liability for the city of Two Harbors is within this agreement? Just, I mean, I have visions of a small child falling off the break wall, and then my heart will sink. So I'm a little nervous about all of this, and wondering if you could give us your legal ease on this particular issue.
Well, if I knew everything that was gonna happen.
I know. I hear you.
I wouldn't be here today, but I will say this, we are, if you are going forward with this, I will make sure we have an indemnification agreement that requires the Draw Events to not only defend the city if it's sued, but indemnify the city for any damages that it will pay. And that's the best we can do. It will also require Draw Events to list the city as an additional insured on its policy.
Can I ask one more, more question? Thank you, Mr. Chair. What is the city's responsibility with regards to the safety of the people that are on the break wall during the events?
Well, I mean, you're signing the agreement, so it's, it's a hundred percent, and it's a hundred percent on draw requests. You both sign the agreement, you both assume liability.
And as I was reading the agreement, I was a little confused, because I wanted, I wasn't clear if there were specific things that were going to take place with regards to safety of the boats, the mooring, I saw something about that, but I was a little confused about whether or not there was going to be any other safety things added to the break wall.
The goal of the indemnification agreement is to say to Draw Events, anything that happens down here during this event is your property. We're not taking any liability. Now, if something happens, somebody can turn around and sue the cities, sue Draw Events, but then we will have a contract, it's called an indemnification and defense agreement, whereby Draw Events will have to step into the place of the city. Now, mind you, that agreement is only as good as two things. It's only as good as the liquidity of Draw Events. If it has nothing, there's nothing to collect from. So the second thing that we will ask for is to be an additional insured on the policy that they carry for the event, which I haven't seen, but I, you know, I'm guessing we'll be in the three or five million dollar range for a policy, which we would get to use if something happened. That's, that's actually better than having the indemnification agreement, because then you have to have Draw Events tell us what they're worth, if they have money, then they have no money.
Right.
So I'd rather, we have to have the policy, but that answers your question.
But we haven't, we haven't seen that policy yet, but will we see that before we sign this?
We saw a preliminary one.
Yeah, I saw that.
Meeting a week or so ago. It'll be updated and.
Yeah, they can't get them this far out, the certificate, because it's only good for.
It's only good for so many days.
Right. He's not gonna pay for that coverage right now, you know, and they can't issue a certificate this far out, is what I've been told.
Is there any way that we can get a letter from whoever is making, doing the insurance policy that states that they have us listed on this document, so that six months down the road, we aren't going, well, where's our name on this policy?
Now, we're getting back to why I said don't do it the first place.
I know, but I'm just, you know.
There is no guarantee. You'll have an agreement. If they don't honor the agreement, you'll have to make a decision, what are you gonna do? You've already issued an event permit. If they don't get the right insurance, we know there are risks that I can't fix. All I can do is make sure we have the agreements in place that we need, and if it doesn't happen, then we'll have recourse. I don't suspect that would be the case. They've done these events all over the country, so.
All right. Well, I, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate you answering my questions. I don't know that they're all answered, because I'm sure I'll find, oh, six more at three o'clock in the morning, but anyway, thank you, Jen, I appreciate it.
I might have answers that don't ask.
All right. Any other questions on that, or discussion? For now, roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
No. Reddew?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Redden?
All right. That concludes our agenda this evening. Does anybody have any announcements?
We have one more item.
Oh, I thought we did. Oh, I have so much writing around it, I didn't, sorry. New business, item number four, a resolution receiving feasibility report and calling for a public hearing to be proposed for the twenty, for the, on the proposed two thousand twenty-two sidewalk improvement project.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
That public hearing would be held at six PM on March twenty-eighth.
At six PM on March twenty-eighth? All right. Any other discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Reddew?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. All right. Now we're done with new business. Any announcements this evening?
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I was able to go down to Capitol Days, since it was canceled two years ago, and I was all excited to go then, and it was fantastic to be able to meet senators and representatives and folks from all across the county, and be able to talk to them about what is important in Lake County and projects that we have that are important to us. And I just want to thank, you know, the city that I was able to go down and do that, and to meet those folks, and I hope to go down every year, and I'm not even like a politics girl, but, and until I got into, you know, doing Two Harbors politics, but it was fantastic to go down there, and it was eye-opening, and it was, it was super educational, even as an educator, I looked at it that way. And wow, so I'm glad that I got that opportunity, and I'd like to thank the city of Two Harbors for letting me be able to do that, and I hope that I was able to make some leeway in, you know, make some headway in getting some projects done here in our area and in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, go ahead.
Thanks, Ben. I just, it's.
Thanks, Ben. I just, it's not necessarily an announcement, but I guess I would just like to say a few words regarding the comments that were made from the public earlier in the meeting and that have been ongoing for a long time. And with regards to those comments from all of the public, we are taking this issue seriously, very seriously, and we are listening to your concerns. And we will continue to do our diligence, as directed by our oath of office, to continue to review these issues with legal counsel. And so I'm just letting you know that we are listening to what's happening, but I ask you to be patient with our process. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Robin. All right. If there's no other announcements, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Sold.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasher?
Yes.
Renwald?
Yes.
Cassie?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. We are adjourned.